Call to order and certification of quorum.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simpson? Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Here.
Councilmember Brantley?
Here.
Councilmember Decker? Councilmember Linton?
Here.
Thank you. We'll move on to item two, the invocation. If you'd please rise. Councilman Simpson, would you please lead us?
Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, how excellent is your name in all the earth. From the rising of the sun to the going down of the same, your name is great and greatly to be praised. We know that every good and perfect gift comes from you, our God. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. Allow it to be effective and efficient. We ask your blessing upon those who have voted and those who are still voting right now. We ask your blessing upon the citizens of this great city, the staff members, the elected officials, the board volunteers, this county, this nation, and this entire earth. We ask this in your son's name. In that name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. First United States pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag, our allegiance to the D- Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We now move on to item four, Proclamations and Awards. And we do have a proclamation this evening. Do we have anyone here to receive the proclamation? All right. If you come on up, we'll take care of that.
Two of our board members.
Okay, well, so, all right. A proclamation of the city of Dickinson, Texas. Whereas brave veterans and their loved ones living amongst us in the city of Dickinson sacrificed in order to serve our country in the United States Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, and Coast Guard. And whereas their sacrifice gifted us the freedoms of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas these brave men and women return home to face the numerous challenges of transitioning from warrior to civilian. And whereas our veterans face homelessness, poverty, unemployment, mental trauma, substance abuse, and the most daunting of all, suicide. And whereas Gallison County is home to over 22,000 veterans needing our support to connect them to programs, events, and resources that will place them on a pathway to recovery and rehabilitation. And whereas our cities, counties, states, and countries prosperous from veterans serving today in public service as educators, medical professionals, law enforcement personnel, business owners, elected officials, and more. Whereas we owe a debt of gratitude to our veterans for their tireless efforts to keep professionalism and devotion to country and keeping with the highest traditions of the United States Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, and Coast Guard here at home. And whereas the city of Dickinson is joining forces with the Gallison County nonprofit Operation Honor Our Local Veterans to honor our brave men and women by adopting a recognition project to install 45 veteran-only parking signs throughout our city. And whereas the city of Dickinson is contributing to the mission to make Gallison County the most veteran-friendly county in the state of Texas. The city of Dickinson, in collaboration with the Associated Credit Union of Texas, support the recognition project to honor local veterans. And now therefore I, Sean Skipworth, Mayor of the city of Dickinson and our city council, do hereby proclaim November 8th, 2022, to be Operation Honor Our Local Veterans Day in the city of Dickinson, and urge all local businesses, churches, and institutions to honor our local veterans by installing a veteran-only parking sign at their establishment.
Counsel and citizens.
Yeah, I put it on there.
Oh, sure.
Counsel and citizens of the city of Dickinson, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here with you. I want to start off by thanking each of you and also recognizing one of your council members for his service to his country and to now serving, and this is why we exist, is those veterans that are returning home, we want them to transition smoothly into the opportunity to continue to serve our community. So Councilman Decker, thank you for serving our community, but also thank you for serving our country. We've been told that you served in several branches of our military, and we want to thank you, sir. And we do have a challenge coin for you. In addition to that, I want to go ahead and start off by introducing our advisor and also our legal counsel, Mark Savaliere Weilleinberger.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity again to be here and for also for recognizing this wonderful organization. I'm not a veteran, but when I heard about their mission and their plan for veterans in Gallison County, I knew I had to be a part. There's an opportunity for all of us to plug in and to support our veterans. So thank you very much for your kind thoughts and for your support of this great organization.
Thank you, sir. Now we want to introduce our community partner from Associated Credit Union of Texas, ACU of Texas, Mr. Jay Koppick.
Real quick, just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to help the community here with these veteran signs. We started a program at the credit union about eight years ago where we started installing them at all of our locations. And a few years later, we connected with Fidencio and his group, and we're trying to get these installed all over the county. So you guys are just one more city that has allowed us to be able to do this, to honor our veterans in this area, and to keep that promise alive that when they come home, that we're going to treat them with love and respect. And so I know it's just a parking sign, but you have no idea how much that means to a veteran to see that they are being recognized individually by having something of their own to be able to call their own and just to park. So anyway, I will, I thank you again for the opportunity, and we appreciate all that you guys do for our city and our county. Thank you.
And in closing, we have an invitation for you. This Friday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. So we want to thank each of you for making this commitment to serve your community, but more importantly, for those veterans that are part of your city. They exist in uniforms, they exist in nurses, they exist in teachers, and they're throughout your community, and we see them every single day. Thank you so much for honoring us, and there's an invitation coming to you to invite you out to our event at Jack Brooks Park at the Gallison County Fairgrounds Friday and Saturday. Please join us, and we really appreciate your opportunity. I want to end with just one quick story. There was a veteran, there was a veteran that was in a really bad situation during the freeze. They called our organization. We came out and recognized that it was in a deplorable situation. The money that we raised through our organization goes to helping veterans during disasters, during emergencies, and also reconnecting them to potential services and programs. That veteran is now in a five-star, he says all the time to us that he's in a five-star home now, a new rental place with great landlords. And so we get to see these things every single day. So we just want to thank you again for your services and programming and allowing us to be here. And we hope that our citizens out here recognize that these signs, we hope to see them in your libraries, your school district, your schools, and also your religious centers, and also your local businesses. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item five, announcements and presentations. Announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.0415. Item 5A, council comments. We'll begin with Councilman Linton.
Good evening, everybody. Counsel, Mayor. This past week, I attended the Dickinson Chamber of Commerce Monthly Farmers Market, and everyone should really try to get out there sometime at the beginning of the month, first Saturday of each month. They have the farmers market and support the chamber and local vendors, and I purchased a couple items, including bear sauce from a veteran-owned company. So to support Veterans Day coming up on Friday. I also spoke with several citizens about multiple topics, including streets, drainage, abandoned houses, and including some suggestions for the Blue Heron, I always mispronounce her on the heron, Blue Heron Project. You know what I'm talking about, the big birds. And some potential lighting solutions for that. Also, I discussed with Director of IT, Renee Valdez, about setting up a meeting to discuss further some of the things that I learned in San Antonio training, as well as some of the things that I get from my job, including cyber, you know, related to cybersecurity, including the city's electronic fund transfer policy, and creating an inventory of attack vectors, hardware, software, HVAC, cameras, and whatnot. I watched our Houston Astros win their second World Series and contributed to the local economy by visiting multiple establishments, and I appreciate each of them for allowing me to yell at the TV for a few minutes. Last thing I have, two things. I was looking at the census data for the Hispanic population here in Dickinson, and I found that 29.05% who speak other languages than English, of that 26.78% speak Spanish. And so I have started learning Spanish at night. Not that my schedule isn't already full, but I figured that was a way I could also give back to the community. So we'll see how that goes. Last thing I have to say is that the Artemis launch, our return to the moon, has been delayed because of the storm coming into Florida, and we're looking for that launch to occur on Monday, November 14th, and I'm hoping to be there watching it launch. So anyway, that's all I had. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. Councilman Decker.
Thank you very much. Glad to see the new faces here. The older ones, I'm very much aware of. My service turned out to be nine years in three different branches. And locally, I never went overseas. This Sunday, we put up the tent at the Festival Light. It took about 20 of us. It's done. We're gradually moving on and hope we make the deadline barring bad weather. But other than that, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brantley.
All right, thank you, everybody for being here. Everybody that's here in person, everybody online, thank you very much for your attendance. I just have a couple of things today. Congratulations to the Astros on the World Series win. Also, congratulations to our Dickinson Gators football team for making the playoffs. They'll be playing at the Rigg this Friday night against Pearland. So congratulations to them. I also want to thank Alexis Santiago, Public Works Director, for helping out this week with a residence, resident issue that we had, jumped right on it like he always does. So Alexis, there you are. Thank you very much. Also wanted to mention to everybody that we're getting very close to the third annual Gator Bayou Lighted Christmas Parade. That's going to be December the 3rd, 6:00 PM. If you haven't gotten your vessel entered in that, you can find them on Facebook, take a look at it, get signed up. You can contact Galen Neiser, and she can get you all the information that you need. You can also view that parade at Dickinson Little League. So looking forward to that. So beyond that, I think that's all I got. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Yes, I'd like to welcome everybody that's here tonight. And one comment, you know, first off is they left before I really had a chance to thank the veterans that were here. You know, we all get to be able to meet in meetings like this and express our views freely and openly because of men like that and women like that that have served this country to keep us free and with all the rights we have. And I think sometimes people forget about it. I did notice tonight when I was coming here, I was really surprised because in all the times that we've had voting at City Hall, this is the first time I can ever remember the lines being out both sides of the doors. I mean, these were some tremendous lines here, and I don't know about the other voting place, but people apparently really care and want their vote to count. So it's the greatest, it's the greatest country in the world. I think sometimes we all take it too much for granted, and then we shouldn't. Anyway, with that said, thank you all for being here.
All right, Councilwoman Simpson.
All right, thank you all for coming today. We appreciate your input and your participation. Happy Veterans Day this week. Thank you for your service to our military branches if you're watching or if you're here with us tonight. We really appreciate it. Dickinson Historical Society is coordinating wreaths across America. We are looking to get wreaths for 67 veterans' graves at the various cemeteries here in Dickinson. The Historical Society has more information on their Facebook and their website. The wreaths are $15 apiece. Congratulations to the Dickinson High School Gator Band at the state marching competition. They placed 24th out of 42 in contests. This is the first time that they've made a state appearance in the last eight years. So thank you to the students, parents, teachers, admins, and of course, all of the community for all of your support for our students. The Salt Grass Potters will have their annual, their fall pottery sale this weekend, November 12th and 13th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Dickinson Railroad Museum. Come check out the great artwork and grab some gifts for the holidays. VFW Post 6378 is having a Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, November 12th, starting at 9:00 AM at the Dickinson ISD Administration Building, and it will end at the VFW. The lineup will begin at 8:00 AM. Hope you can join us for that. The VFW is also hosting the Community Thanksgiving Dinner sponsored by the Dickinson Police Department, November 19th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's no charge, but donations are accepted. It's dine-in only. And finally, the Rotary Club of Dickinson Annual Christmas Parade will take place on Thursday, December 8th. It will begin at McAdams Junior High and travel north to Highway 3 to City Hall, where there will be more holiday festivities for families to enjoy. Check out the Rotary Club of Dickinson Facebook page for the full details. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city staff, citizens. Welcome. Glad to see everybody here. I hope everyone had the opportunity to vote. It is important to vote. I want to wish a happy early Veterans Day to all those who served. A friend and mentor of mine once said that when you serve as a veteran, you are giving the country a blank check to cash with your life when you put that down. And so definitely want to say happy early Veterans Day as well. Congratulations to the Astros. Glad to see them win their second World Series. Also want to say congratulations to the Dickinson High School football team for making the playoffs and for the Dickinson High School Band for their performance at the state. Since the last time I was at a meeting, I've gone to the Houston-Gallison Area Council meeting, and so we're always moving one step closer towards that project for Harvey Drainage Repair and Roads for the 15.75 million that's supposed to come to us through the Houston-Gallison Area Council. We're moving each step closer to that. Also attended the Bay Area Turning Point Gala as well. A point of personal privilege, Thursday, this past Thursday, I graduated from the FBI Citizens Academy, which is an invitation-only community-based training that goes on. They opened up a cohort in the Gallison County area, and this was the fourth cohort. Got an opportunity to learn a lot about what the FBI does in this area and how they partner with local law enforcement to get some things done. Also have been in communication with city staff, particularly Renee, our IT director, along myself and Councilman Linton about us taking the next step to RFP for the much-needed infrastructure upgrades. We are one snafu away from having some major problems at the city, and I'm glad under the leadership of Theo and Renee that we're going to get some of that stuff done. So I look forward to going there, going forward with that project. I would also like to extend condolences to the family of Mr. John Laffey. John Laffey was a long-term Dickinson resident, and his, he and his wife partnered with Dickinson First United Methodist Church's mission project, which in turn worked with my church, Faith UMC's mission. So we did a lot of joint work since I've been in Dickinson for community building. Mr. Laffey leaves behind his wife and also his daughter, Julie Johnson, who was one of our previous city administrators. So we want to keep the Laffey family in our prayers. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'd also like to welcome everybody this evening. I hope you all voted. We know if you didn't. It's on the list. Do your civic duty. Be sure to vote. So I hope everybody did. And like Councilman Wilson, I have not seen a line that long outside there before, and the community center line is actually longer from what I've told. So that's in some ways a good sign, I think, actually, to see that. So I'm happy to see that. I want to take, also take the opportunity to congratulate the Gator Band. As a former band nerd myself, I know it takes a lot of hard work, and they don't always get a lot of accolades. So congratulations to them. And also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We probably, we won't have a council meeting, I think, again until December. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and hope everything, you have a good one with your friends and your family. With that, that's all that I have. So we'll move on to item 5B, the city manager update.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. I'll keep this relatively short. One of the big things I want to just let everyone know is that it has come across our, you know, radar that the text dot is shutting down the intersection between 517, at the intersection of 517 and Interstate 45, starting on the 11th, Friday, the 11th, at around, I believe, 8:00 PM, and will be reopening again on Monday morning around 8:00 AM. So if you could, you know, if you need to get around, just know that that intersection is going to be shut down largely because they'll be doing most of their heavy work during that weekend. So that should, you know, cause some logistical issues, but hopefully everyone will be safe and find alternate routes during that time period. And also just to keep in mind, we are still working on the California at 29th Street closure. We had to do a little bit of reshuffle as we found a water and a gas line that was not previously known to be running right in the water line for the drainage project. So we're having to coordinate with the Water District, who's been great with us, and Center Point as well, to get those lines reworked, and we'll be setting the pipe in the coming month or so, so that we can actually have increased water flow of West Gun Bayou. So with that, I'm just going to turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We move on to item six, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time, lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. And our first person is Sue Emmett.
Further reflection, I hope you decided to relinquish my time tonight. You're welcome.
Well, we always love to hear from you. That's a shame. So, okay, all right. Then we'll have Mr. Darrell Hartwick. Could you please just give us your address, sir?
4201 38th Street. I'm just here tonight to offer some praise to Mr. Santiago. I sent some emails to various city councilmen and to the mayor, and it finally trickled down to him about some concerns about ditches in our neighborhood. Actually, the street my brother lives on, 39th Street and the road. Mr. Santiago met me out there. We discussed it. Couple days later, he had the guys out there cleaning the ditches, cleaning the coverts, and they've come back and repaired the road. And I know what they do is a hard job, so I just wanted to compliment him and his guys on what they did and tell them that it is appreciated. And I want y'all to know that.
Well, thank you, sir. And lastly, we have Mr. David Lehman. Same drill, if you could just give us your address, please.
3802 Texas Avenue. Good evening. As you well know, I guess you, I'm starting to become a familiar face over here. My pet peeve over the last two or three months has been the Water Board and their inaction. I'm now going to take my grief to the Inspector General of the state of Texas. In case anybody doesn't know that, we do have an inspector general. So just want to let y'all know that's in the works. I'll be pushing that. If anybody doesn't know who I am, just remember I don't quit. Okay? I may die, but I don't quit. So anyway, I also want to talk about the city itself. I do think that we've got to change some things in some areas. I've had two, since my grief and me giving y'all some grief about some of the issues that I've had with the Water Board, I've had two city councilmen approach me and discuss those situations. I have yet to have anybody at the Water Board approach me and discuss the situations that I'm, that are most concerning to me. So just want to give a clap out to those two people. You know who you are. And so anyway, that's the issues that I have. The police department, I think we need to do a little bit better job of policing this town. We're getting bigger. We're growing. And three officers on the streets and one sergeant at all times for patrol is a little lacking when you've got an eight to 10 billion, excuse me, eight to $10 million budget per year. And please keep track of my time. Somebody's got time?
I've got some.
Got you, just let me know. So those are some issues that I think need to be addressed. One other thing that is really a problem with me, I don't like to see a police car in front of a church parking, in a church parking lot patrolling or sitting there, you know, patrolling our cars. That's called purgatory. And if anybody understands what stress and environment is, if anybody's in stress, a church is usually an open door. Let's don't have the police department sitting in a parking lot where a church is. So anyway, that's all I got tonight. You guys have a great night, and appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
There's been a motion approved by Councilman Simpson, a second by Councilman Linton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eight, public hearing and action items from public hearing. Item 8A, conducted public hearing concerning a request for a specific use permit for a tobacco-oriented use in a neighborhood commercial zoning district for approximately two acres located at 614 West FM 517, Suite 618B, and legally described as Dickinson Crossing, 2006, abstract 19, Lot A, Acres 2.001. And we'll turn it over to our staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This property is south of 517. I'm not working. There we go. It is in an existing strip center, and they are going to occupy approximately 700 square feet. What they're proposing is Tiger Smoke &amp; Vape site layout, and then this is some displays that they have kind of at a different location, but very similar to what they plan to have at this location. Staff does recommend approval, and then Planning and Zoning Commission recommended disapproval by unanimous vote. That's all that staff has.
All right, thank you. Do we have an applicant here to present this evening?
Yes, we do.
Okay, if you please come on up and just give us your, your name and your address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Solomon. I'm, my address is 1803 Opel Field Lane, Richmond, Texas. Missed you on, covered it pretty well. I have nothing to add, but if any questions, I'd be here. Thank you so much.
Okay, we can't ask questions at this point, but we could at the next item, so.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, there are no public comments. Sign up for this item this evening. There is no need for an applicant rebuttal. So we will adjourn the public hearing at 7:29 PM and move on to item 8B, ordinance, consideration and possible action concerning a request for a specific use permit for a tobacco-oriented use in a neighborhood commercial zoning district for approximately two acres located at 614 West FM 517, Suite 61B, I'm sorry, 618B, and legally described as Dickinson Crossing, 2006, abstract 19, Lot A, Acres 2.001. Is there a motion on this item? Is a motion approved by Councilman Wilson? Is there a second? Anyone?
I'll second it.
All right, there's a second by Councilman Brantley. Is there any discussion?
What was the reason the planning commission disapproved it?
Planning commission, when I went through the staff report and the criteria, there was nothing specific that I could assign to each, any of the criteria. But their main reason from that meeting was the proximity of another tobacco-oriented use within a couple of blocks of this location.
Technically, a gas station.
Yes, sir.
Does, since this is a commercial situation, do we have anything from the EDC at all in regard to this use, by any chance?
Corlin?
Thank you. This is Corlin Holm, the Executive Director for Economic Development Corporation. The EDC is in favor of the tobacco at this location. Reason being, you want to cluster type of, this type of businesses to have nodes of the same type of use. So when you or I want to shop at something, we understand that sometimes we, that one business doesn't have what we want, but the next one does, and then we go back to the other one. So looking at any... So looking at, and you could look at car dealerships and stuff like that, they create nodes. So creating these nodes in certain areas of the shopping center makes it very viable to make certain that the entire shopping center is successful in the long run. Now, this is an 800-square-foot store. Trying to fill up an 800-square-foot location is very challenging, and this is a fit for that type of use and that type of strip center.
So, Mayor.
Councilman Simpson?
Couple of questions, I guess. 614 FM 517, that's like by TJ Reed's and the Healthy Hub and the Alkaline Water Spot. Okay, what was in there before? Do we know, or has it been?
Nothing, I think.
Okay.
They actually, I believe, split a tenant space, so they actually did do an address request for this, which is why there's now an A and a B.
Okay.
So it's, Water Boy went in just recently, which took half, and then this is taking the second half.
Those were my two questions.
Councilman Brantley, is like you want to say something?
What's your target demographic?
Like anywhere, anybody over 21, like, they're like mostly restaurant, like 30s, 40s old demographic, mostly because of the restaurants decided. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Can you kind of describe, I saw some pictures, but can you kind of describe what your, what your product mix is? What do you sell primarily? I know there's a number of pictures, but, I mean, what's your, what's your biggest seller? What?
It's, we're going to keep a lot of cigars and gift items, like candles, some knives and stuff, and incense, and the, some tobacco products, cigars, cigarettes, and some vape products, and, yeah, that's pretty much it. Mostly gift items and tobacco products.
Okay. I ask all these questions because some of this is a little bit personal to me. I have two teenage sons.
Yeah.
I am very involved in Dickinson Athletics, and so I know kind of what the problems that, that we have with underage folks getting access to vapes. And I'm very familiar with the neighborhood behind your proposed establishment, right? So what's your, what's your plan or what's your protocol? What does your company do in order to ensure that underage kids aren't able to get a hold of vape products or whether it be tobacco or THC or whatever?
We have a three signs all over in the store, and outside the store, we put like two signs saying above 21 only, no entry. Even in the, in the store, we have put multiple signs saying nobody over 21 allowed, no, sorry, not under 21 allowed, sorry. Nobody under 21 allowed. And then our staff checks the ID for everybody who buys it. Even they look like they're 30 years old, we still ask for it because we don't want to take any chances. So they're pretty strict about that, and there's no compromise on that, actually.
Do you ID Walter Wilson?
Yeah, no. [laughter]
Wish would.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much, we've, like, even the gas stations, they follow that, and it's pretty strict, we do.
And I guess my next question really is for Mr. Pruitt. We, we got the agenda on Friday, and I went through it. I have some additional questions, but I do know the demographics of the neighborhood behind the store, and I'd really like to talk to some of those constituents, if possible. Is there any way that, can we table this motion?
Well, you have two things. I mean, I think first, specific use permit, so if there's issues that, that you feel that are unique to this spot, you can add those into the permit, and it's only the first reading. So if there's, between now and the next reading, if you want to add more, if there's other information that you find out, then, like, assuming you approve it tonight and there's additional things you want to add, the second reading, we can do that.
Okay.
And that would be December 14th.
Okay. Just so you know, I'm not, I'm not fundamentally opposed, right? But we still represent constituents, and, and I want to make sure that I'm able to talk to some of those folks that live in that neighborhood, so.
We just basically picked that location, we were looking at the location in the Lake City, but it was very close to school, so we avoided that. We didn't want to be anywhere where the kids are or anything, so that's why we didn't pick that location. We went in here because there were like restaurants around it, so it's more kind of complimented. So I said, well, this is, I think it's fine. And there's like a barber shop and stuff like that. So, yeah, I think it was pretty proper, I would say.
Sure, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Are there any other questions or comments?
How many, do you have another location of this Tiger Vape? How many locations do you have?
Yeah, we have a, we have a location in Santa Fe. We just opened one location in Santa Fe, and it's so far pretty good. We have no issues. We have four staff working, two full-time and two part-time.
And that's the only one?
Yeah, that's the only one we have, yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
With Councilman Decker voting no, the motion carries. Move on to item 8C. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item 8C, Conduct a Public Hearing Concerning an Amendment to Chapter 18-28 Establishment of Board. The Code of Ordinance says to consist of five members and two alternate members. We'll start with the staff, oh, well, first of all, we'll convene the public hearing at 7:38 PM. Forgot to do that earlier. And we'll move on to staff applicant presentation. Oh, it's your turn, okay.
So this item is just to adjust the zoning code, to change from a seven-board Board of Adjustment to a five-board Board of Adjustment. The state code actually does require that this board have a 75% in order to hear any items, and then also 75% to vote in favor of the applicant. And so we currently don't have any alternates on this board, so we would also like to add two alternates. We are having a hard time filling vacant positions in this one. And so anytime someone either fails to vote or is not there, then they can't be counted as someone voting for the applicant. Staff does recommend approval, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and staff would also like council to consider adding additional alternate members.
Okay, we have no public comment for this item, so there's no staff or applicant rebuttal, so we'll adjourn the public hearing at 7:39 PM and move on to item 8D. Consideration and Possible Action Concerning an Amendment to Chapter 18-28 Establishment of Board of the Code of Ordinance says to consist of five members and two alternate members.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ooh, I think y'all were literally simultaneous. We'll say, motion by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Brantley. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Simpson.
So if I'm clear, we're, we're going from a seven-member board to five and two alternates, and the rationale behind that is attendance?
Some of it, if I can just be clear, is the attendance has to do, I think many of them have very legitimate reasons not to be there. There are some health issues involved and some, some of that. So to get 75% of a seven-member board is harder than getting 75% of a five-member board when you have two backups that can fill in as necessary. So, and I do think that we do have some, at least one board member that, that is seeking to, to, to step off, so we are going to have an opportunity to fill a role there. But, but anyway, that's, we are kind of running into a quorum issue with, with that board, but it's not, for lack of trying, on their part.
Yeah, I, I'm well familiar with the, with the troubles of trying to make sure you have a quorum on some of the boards. I, I'm just curious, though, sometimes it seems like it's harder for five-member boards to make quorum as well. Because three of five is, is 66%, right?
You still have to get four.
Yeah, so you still have to get, yeah. Okay.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes. I'd also, I don't know how you, I don't know if you, how we'd put this in there or not, but to me, the two alternates should be active alternates. You know, with the build as a standards board, you know, it was always, it was always insisted that they be at the, the alternates be at the, so they're always up to speed. And Johnny, I promise you that this thing with five members will be a lot easier to work with the two alternates than it was at seven members, because, like I said, with having a 75%, that's, that's pushing it, trust me. So that's why I'm in favor of this being happening.
Mayor, Council, I'd also like to add, I noticed it as five members and two alternates, but I would like you to consider adding more than two alternates to this.
Well, you'd make, my opinion, the two alternates would need to be vote, you know, could be, so they could be voting members. If they're there, they're there to, you know, they're there to, they're active members then.
And that would, that would be what we're talking about, is that, so whenever, if we're at five, when we have a, anyone who can't make the meeting, you'd have a first alternate who could step in and a second alternate that could step in, because right now, right now, it's a seven-member board. Six must be present to, to convene the meeting and to act in any way, shape, or form, where in this scenario, four have to be there, but you have seven to get to four instead of seven to get to six, basically.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Brantley?
Is there a statutory reason why the board is a December, a two-year-on-December term?
There shouldn't be a statutory reason for that.
Okay. Because I would recommend that we bring this in line with our, our board policy, and so all of our other boards are, their terms are based on a June-to-June. So I would recommend that we, anything within the ordinance that is counter to our board policy be brought in line with that board policy.
So I guess similar to the other item, we can, if, if we want, we can go ahead and approve this now, and then other changes can be brought up in the second reading, so.
Yeah, we can get that in line, and, and really, the good thing about this is it's still technically a seven-member board, so we're not really having to do, even, we're not retooling that board today in any way, shape, or form. You know, we may be adding somebody in the near future, but it's still seven people, it's just that we'd be just deeming two alternates, you know? So that, so, and, and so putting it in line with policy shouldn't be an issue for us.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have one for Yvonne. What recommended number would you have for the alternates for the council to approve?
So through you and I, we discussed, you know, going upwards of four to five alternates.
Yeah.
If, if, you know, just because, like, there's been a couple of meetings where someone either declines to vote, and then their vote doesn't count, and then people not being there. We didn't have a quorum last night. So that's just two members not being there, and we still would not have had a quorum last night without somebody else showing up, even with.
Now, just have a question. My understanding is, you, if you abstain, it is a no vote. Is that correct? That there has to be a very specific reason to abstain legally in Texas?
So, yeah, so for there, since you have, you have to have four, if you had a five-member board, four members have to be present to do any action whatsoever. If you abstain for a legally justifiable reason, then that's where an alternate would step in.
But I think that's not what's happening here. I think they're just abstaining, which is actually a no vote, is that right?
That's exactly right. So then you're having a no vote, so then if you only had four members, I mean, that, whatever it would be before the board would be denied.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that, but, yeah. Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item 8E. Conduct a Public Hearing Concerning an Amendment to Appendix A Subdivisions of the Code of Ordinance says to A, update definitions and terms, and B, require infrastructure approval or acceptance prior to final plat application. Move on to the staff presentation, and we will convene the public hearing at 7:45 PM.
Okay, so on this one, we are asking that we update quite a few different terms. Some of them are just kind of administrative because the code is much older, and so, for example, Board of Aldermen being changed to City Council. The two big things with the terms is accepted and approved. So accepted means that the construction improvements have been accepted, but they will, and they will be maintained by the city. Approved means that we have said that they actually do meet the requirement, but they're going to remain the responsibility of the property owner. So that's the big, main difference between those two. And then there are some additional terms that we did update, and then filed, basically, meaning that it's been either placed on an agenda or forwarded to the mayor for signature. That second change is that the infrastructure improvements have to be made before the plat gets recorded. And so this actually adds a couple of different changes. We're changing instead of six months to 36 months. That allows them to draw up civil plans, have them submitted and reviewed by the city for permitting, and then to install that infrastructure before that plat gets, gets actually filed. And then we did put in, you know, if needed, they can apply for an extension. And then on the final plat, decreasing that from a one-year approval to a six-month approval, because once that final plat gets approved, all they have to do is file it with the county clerk. So there was no additional actions needed at that point. Staff recommends approval, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I do want to point out, there was an additional correction that was requested. Section 3, Definition C, City Council, I did not update, but the governing body of the City Council, city comprised of the mayor and six council members. The code currently says five.
All right, thank you. There are no public comments for this item, so there's no staff applicant rebuttal, so we will adjourn the public hearing at 7:47 PM. Move on to item 8F. Consideration and Possible Action Concerning an Amendment to Appendix A Subdivisions of the Code of Ordinance says to A, update definitions and terms, and B, require infrastructure approval or acceptance prior to final plat application.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilman Simpson, a second by Councilman Wilson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those, I'm sorry, Councilman Brantley?
I do actually do have a question. So we approve the preliminary plat, and construction commences up to 36 months later. You have the final plat, correct?
Yes, correct.
Is there anything filed of record between that preliminary plat and that final plat?
The civil plans, so not necessarily filed with the county, but they'd have to submit for permits for the, the infrastructure.
Okay.
To put in roads, put in water, sewer, put in whatever infrastructure needs to be put in to serve that development.
So that, that kind of presents a little bit of a problem from a, a title standpoint, right? Because when you have, you know, let's say, let's just say it's a subdivision and you have homes that are built for, for, and somebody needs to, to draw an easement within that subdivision, and there's a title search done, or somebody needs to do something within that neighborhood, and there's a title search done, and that plat does not capture any utility easements or public easements, it, it doesn't exist, right? So the residents of that neighborhood could be hindered if, for some reason, the developer doesn't file that plat. You know, the first person moves in within 12 months and the developer doesn't file that plat within 36 months, you know, I could see something being missed in a title search.
I think you're talking about the final plat, because that's why we're shorting in it, shorting, shortening it from a year to six months, because right now, they can wait a whole year before submitting a final plat. What we're talking about with the preliminary is what you do so that we can allow you to start construction as the company, but someone's not, cannot move into a house until final plat is approved at all.
Yeah, so the final plat would get done, recorded, and then they'd be able to sell lots off.
Yep, I got you.
Yeah, I will say this, so this actually was something that Yvonne and I have been working on. I do want to, and because it's something very unusual, and, and how this was structured, so the way the current ordinance is structured, when someone builds a subdivision in Dickinson, they can basically apply for final plat before they've actually finished construction of the subdivision. So we, and we're having, and once you, once you accept final, by, by our own rules, we have to take responsibility. We may not have inspected it because it's not done yet. We may not, so now this actually puts it in the order it's supposed to be in, where you have your preliminary, where all the civils, we don't accept application until we've inspected it and it meets all of our engineering standards, then you can file for your application for final plat, get that approved, then you can get that filed. So right now, we kind of have it a little out of order.
And that's what I didn't understand, so, I got you.
The other thing that I would add, because you mentioned like easements and things like that, an issue that we've actually ran into recently with a subdivision that's plotted already, is that we did not get the necessary easements when it came to putting that infrastructure in. And so if we put that infrastructure in, and we know the easements that can, need to be done, then we will add those to the, the final plat before it gets recorded.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none will take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item nine A. Consideration and possible action concerning an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 dash 20, Property Owner Notification in 18 dash 24, City Council Hear and Action of the Code of Ordinances. A, to increase the mailing distance requirement. B, to remove the certified mail requirement. C, to add the required publication requirement. And D, to change the responsibility of notices from the applicant to city staff. The second and final reading.
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion approved by Councilman Simpson, a second by Councilman Decker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, Executive Close Session. Item 10A, Consultation with Attorney, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code. Discussion with Attorney regarding, contemplate pending litigation and regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. Delibrations on real property, Section 551.072, Texas Government Code. Delibrations regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Economic development discussion, Section 551.087, Texas Government Code. Discussion regarding commercial or financial information from a business prospect and the potential offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, Government Code. Personnel matters. Discuss employment, appointment, removal, or evaluation of a public officer employee to wit acting and interim police chief. We will convene into executive session at 7:52 PM.
A second by Councilman Decker. Any discussion? I think he's gonna do a fabulous job and I'm excited to have him on board, so.